Welcome, everybody, to Fitchburg's zoning board of appeals meeting for October 10, 2023. Sorry for the late start. I'm just trying to get enough attendees to be able to move ahead, okay? So I want to start out with the pledge allegiance.
No, certainly.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the first case tonight is ZBA 2023-12, Mina Gobriel for 219 Highland Ave. And I guess we're going to go to a brief intermission. Be advised that FATV is conducting an audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. Ask if anybody else in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves for the record now by standing and stating your name and city of residence. At this time, ask that all electronic devices be placed in the silent mode. When it's time, if anybody would like to come up and address a particular case, we're just going to ask that you come to the podium, state your name, address, and the item that you would like to speak to, and you have about a two-minute timeframe, okay? All right, so the first case, again, is ZBA 2023-12. This is a review of a special permit that was granted to Mina Gobriel for the property at 219 Highland Ave. Mina, are you I believe there was some-
You just come here?
Oh, you are?
Yes.
Oh, okay. How are you this evening?
That's good. What about you?
Good, good. Thank you. If you could just tell us a little bit about the status of where you're at?
I'm sorry, one more time?
If you could just tell us a little bit about the project and the status of it, please?
Yeah, I'm trying to open the convenience store back with the, to help the neighbor heard the row.
Have you, have you started the interior for the convenience store?
No, no, I didn't start yet.
Okay. And when do you expect to be able to get started on that?
It's probably maybe this next month or the month after. I'm working on the applications.
Okay.
So once I finish the applications, I will start over.
Okay. What's your anticipated completion time?
I'm sorry, one more time?
What is your anticipated completion date?
I'm not sure exactly, but I, I will say maybe as next month.
Okay. You think you'll be able to actually do it fairly quick, or do you think it's going to take several months?
I think it's going to take a little, little time because they know that all application takes time to send it and they respond back to you and take a little while.
I just quickly want to go through the conditions, and maybe you could just speak to whether you've completed them or not. Is that okay?
Okay.
Okay, the first one is no onsite service after 11:00 p.m. in compliance with the ABCC.
Yep.
Good there. Petitioner shall not operate as a package store so-called for the sale of alcohol to be consumed off-premise?
Yep.
Thank you. Any conditions from the license commission as to the onsite beer and wine pouring license would be incorporated into the special permit conditions? I guess that's just a statement, so that you understand that, right?
Yes.
Hours of operation will be 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday and closed on Sundays?
Yes.
Thank you. Petitioner to submit a certified parking plan depicting a minimum of eight spaces meeting standard parking dimensions as listed in the zoning bylaws prior to the review meeting in October. So it doesn't look like we have a registered certified plot plan. We got kind of a sketch. Do you need some more time to be able to provide that?
I already, the guy, he working on it. So I sent one, like, a picture for Mercedes. I think maybe she able to show it to you.
Can you see me?
Yes.
Can you see this?
Yes.
Okay. Is this what you've submitted?
Yes.
Okay. We appreciate it. We do need a-
Thank you.
A registered certified plot plan versus a sketch. And that was a request from the chair, whom is not here tonight.
Okay.
Okay. I'm just going to keep moving through the conditions. Parking spaces to be striped and directional arrows painted on the pavement showing the traffic flow and how traffic would enter the parking lot from Pearl Street and proceed one way around the building, exiting onto Highland Ave.
Yeah, the guy who did it for me, he did like the enters and the exit.
Okay.
They showing the direction and they liked these, the parking lot spaces, it's look like a triangle, so the customer can pack up and goes, go to the other way to exit from the back there in the building.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Number eight was a special permit decision to be recorded at the registry of deeds and a copy-
Yeah.
Recorded the special permit provided to the board. Do we have that?
That's recorded, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Mina. And a review on October 10. So it looks like there's only one condition we're still waiting for?
Okay. What's your condition?
The registered certified pla- pa- bah, parking plan.
Okay.
Okay. So right now, I'm just going to turn it over to the board for some questions. Mr. Byrne, do you have any questions of the applicant?
No, Michael, I don't. I've driven past the property, and it looks like they're really trying to get it opened as quickly as they can, because every day that they're not open, they're losing money.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Reynolds?
He's muted.
All right, I found the button. No, no questions, Mike.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gallagher?
Thank you, Michael. I have no questions but a comment. I visited the site today and noted that the parking lot was nicely laid out for parking, striped properly as we wanted, and the handicap was up front with the exiting lane. And I thought it looked very nice, so I'd like to thank the applicant for that.
Great.
That's all I have.
I don't have any questions myself. Is there anybody in the audience here that would like, has any questions regarding this permit? Great. Make note that there is none. At this, at this time, does the board want further review, or do we just, would we like to put a timeline on when we would have the certified? Okay, there is a member virtually that has a comment regarding this case, and her name is Susan Gravel.
Hi.
Hi, how are you this evening?
Good, good.
If you could just state your name and address, and you have a comment specific to this application?
Which application? Because I'm talking about the one for the home occupation business or a studio salon on Harry Gary Street.
Okay, that will be later tonight, ma'am.
Okay.
If we're able to stay on track, that would be at 7:15.
Oh, my God. All right. So you want me to come back on then that time, or so I can't?
You most certainly can check in at 7:15 and see how we're progressing.
All right. Okay, so 7:15. Okay, I'll come, I'll check, I'll turn, I'll come back on at 7:15.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Great. Okay. Any feedback from the board with regards to review, no review, and with regards to, you know, obtaining the final information that we need?
Mr. Co-Chair?
Yes, sir. Mr. Byrne?
I'd like to get a firm date for him to open, and then if after, six months after that firm date, we don't have any complaints from any of our boards, city boards, or from the neighbors, we should let it go without a review.
Okay. So I think Mr. Gobriel indicated that he anticipates on opening up in about 30 days. And I would suspect that based on what we typically see to obtain registered plot plans, I would say 30 days is probably pretty aggressive. So, you know, although we did ask for it for tonight's meeting, so it's been several months, what are the board's wishes as far as, do they want a review, and if so, when? Mr. Reynolds, do you have any feedback?
Muted.
Yep, I'm working on it.
He's finding the button.
Finding the button. I think that we should set a date for the applicant to come back. I do agree with the spirit of Mr. Byrne's point, which I take in sum and substance to be, we're all heading in the right direction. Let's just make sure that everything's okay. So I would recommend that we, that the board, to finalize the information, would be to have the applicant come back in, I would say, two or three months to close out all of the items that we've been asking for. And then at that point, you could entertain some type of sunset clause to say if everything's okay.
Okay. Three months, January?
I'm good with that.
Mr. Byrne?
Aye.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yeah. Thank you, Michael. I'd like to associate myself with the comments of Joe Byrne's. I think that that's reasonable, and I feel the same way on that, so that's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Gobriel, so what we're going to do is we're going to vote on a review period in January, okay, to have you come back. And in that timeline, we'll basically, it'll give you plenty of time to be able to, you know, get the business underway. We can come in and, you know, see how things are going. But more importantly, to have you have the registered certified plot plan ready, okay?
Okay, okay.
And if you have any questions about that, you can contact Mercedes at the building department. But I think we really need to get that piece of it, and then we'll be in pretty good shape.
Okay.
Okay.
So once I get that, once I get the, you get the paper for the parking lot, so I'm be able to open, or I can open without approval of the parking lot?
No, we already issued your permit, so you're good to go, okay?
Okay.
And if, if you really pick up some steam and you have the registered plot plan earlier, and you have the business up and running earlier, just let Mercedes know, because we might be able to get you in sooner and get everything buttoned up for you, okay?
Okay.
We appreciate your time.
Thank you so much.
So what I want to do is, we're going to have a motion, and if, what we'll do is, we're going to strike number nine.
Okay.
Okay. And we're going to change that to review. And that's going to be January, January 9.
Yeah, I'm ready, I'm ready to go, right? So I can open anytime if it didn't open until January, but-
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I want to making sure, okay?
Okay.
Okay.
And we're going to change number six to January. So it's just the last word.
Okay.
Okay. And if I could have a motion with those changes by anybody?
So moved.
A second?
I'll second.
Second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. Yes, okay, we're going to do a roll call, I guess, to Byrne. Mr. Byrne?
Aye. Aye. Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
In favor, yes.
Thank you, sir. And myself, I am in favor. And I am in favor as well.
Okay, great. Mina, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
You have a good night.
You too. Thank you. I appreciate you, everybody.
Okay, next case, ZBA 2023-19, Deborah Lord, property at 808 Fisher Road. And again, this is a review of a special permit. Okay, so I'm going to give that back to you.
Deborah Lord, 808 Fisher Road, Fitchburg, Mass.
How are you this evening?
Good, and you?
I'm finding my way. Just give me one second, please. Okay, so you're here for a review?
Yes.
Basically, just going to kind of, wow, take you through the conditions, right? And we have a little bit of feedback from the Board of Health, and then we should be good to go. So condition number one, no more than two miniature female goats, including only the goats currently present on the property.
Right.
Good. Any used bedding refuse debris, including any spoiled grain to be moved to rear the property, line at a minimum of 75 feet from all boundary lines, or to be disposed of off-site, including present refuse and future refuse.
Yes.
Good. Applicant to meet any licensing and other requirements from the Board of Health and City Clerk's office.
I, I paid, I did everything that I was supposed to, I think.
Okay. Got some feedback from Board of Health. I'm just going to read it to you.
Okay.
If I can find my way here. Okay, as far as conditions, it says we are good here. Mrs. Lord is required to have a license, and she has applied for, but it has not been paid for, so the license has not been issued.
Has not been paid for?
Yeah, I believe J.F. must be a member of Board of Health, did visit the property as well, satisfied. But I'll let him provide some feedback.
I thought I paid already the $300, and then-
Okay, that was the application fee for here.
Okay.
Right?
Yep.
But apparently, there's some licensing with the Board of Health.
Okay.
So maybe just check on that?
I will check on that.
Okay.
But I did pay for the registry of deed, the registry of deeds, and for the stamp to go when I went to the registry of deeds.
Okay. So it sounds like you're almost there.
I didn't realize there was another payment. I can pay, I'll pay that tomorrow.
Okay. So we'll just keep rolling through.
Okay, that will be paid tomorrow.
Let's see. And applicant to meet set marks and other Board of Health requirements regarding the location of the proposed use relative to the septic system, if any. So did somebody from the Board of Health visit?
They did. I wasn't there. My son was there.
Okay.
I had an appointment.
Yep. So just check with your son, see if there were any requirements from the Board of Health. There may be none.
I don't think there was. I think they came, just checked, and they said everything looked fine.
Perfect. I'm going to move on. Number five, enclosure to be maintained in good condition in the area designated on the plan.
Yes.
So far so good. Adequate, adequate and appropriate cold weather shelter for the animals to be provided within the designated area?
Yes.
Great. Any animals to receive regular veterinary care and inoculations?
Yes, they've had all their vaccines.
Great. Owner shall ensure that there is no odor or rodents present on the property due to the use.
No, nothing.
Thank you. Next, not to be operated as a public or private nuisance.
No.
Everything's good.
Everything's fine.
Let's see, these are just statements. Special permit may be revoked for violations of these conditions. Special permit to expire in five years from date of filing with the city clerk and must be renewed prior to the expiration. Sunset clause, special permit shall terminate or expire upon the sale, transfer, or change of ownership from Deborah Lord. And number 14 was, we have a review on October 10. Okay. So now I'm going to turn it over to the board. Mr. Byrne, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Mr. Reynolds?
No questions.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gallagher?
Yeah. Thank you, Michael. No questions, but I did do a site visit today, and I was quite pleased with what I saw. I noted there was no odor at all. The pen was immaculate. The goat seemed very happy to come over to greet me, and the fence looks like it's definitely adequate height, that jumping would not be an issue, I believe. And the shelter was faced the right way. And I was really happy with what I saw. So-
Great.
Thank you, Deborah.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Okay, apparent, I might stop at the Board of Health. It looks like it's an animal keeping license application.
An animal, oh, okay.
And I don't think it's actually with the city. It might be with the state, but-
State?
Just stop down and talk to them. They'll help you through it.
At City Hall?
Yep.
Okay.
Board of Health, and ask for Jean LeBlanc.
Jean LeBlanc, okay.
Yep. And, and then I think you'll be good to go.
I think that's who my son said came to the house.
It is, yes, ma'am.
Mr. LeBlanc.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. So I think at this time, maybe just make a recommendation to the board that we just change number 14 to applicant to provide record of animal keeping license. And would that suffice the board?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep, that sounds good. Timeline, 30 days?
Yes.
In 30 days. Does that work?
That works.
Great. I'm going to ask the audience, is there anybody in the audience has any questions regarding this particular case? Great. So if I could ask that we move through a vote to approve the review with striking number 14 and replacing it with what I mentioned, and I think we'd be good to go?
So moved.
A second, please?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Roll call.
Aye.
Mr. Byrne?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Gallagher?
In favor.
And myself as well. Great.
Thank you.
The review is approved, and just within 30 days, if you can get that taken care of, we're good to go.
I'll have it taken by the end of the week.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Bye-bye.
Okay. Trying to catch up. 6:41. Okay, next case is ZBA 2022-13, Adam Fishtading, Fish- Dadian. Did I get-
Yes.
Fishtadian. I was close.
How you doing?
76 Pritchard Street, and this is a review of a special permit for 76 Pritchard Street, right? Okay, great. How are you, sir?
Not bad. How are you?
Good, good. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a bunch of conditions, and I think we had talked about them. This says a review and no-
Yeah, he requested it to be today.
To be moved up. Okay. So I won't go through the conditions yet. You asked to be here earlier. Please tell us a little bit about the project.
Okay, I got the, I had difficulty with the electrician and the plumbing.
Okay.
The plumber. Both, well, with the electrician, he did the electrical, find everything. It took him about three and a half months to come and inspect it. I was calling him, calling him, anyway. And then that was done. They got it inspected, and they pulled, you know, they put their rough inspection. And then the plumber, they came here twice. They took my money, honest to God. They, they didn't come back. They did some work, they left. And that was, they put me back another two months, these guys. And now I got the electric, I mean, the plumber, hopefully by end of week, he said we have the plumbing, rough plumbing done, and we're going to have it inspected. And beside that, I had the, Mr. Solomon came over and looked at it, and he let me go with the sheet rock, the part that is not plumbing. It's just the electrical and the walls. But he, he checked all the insulation and stuff. He said, go ahead, I'm start putting the sheet rocks and waiting, hopefully by end of week, be done, the plumbing, so I can completely get the sheet rocks. And the floors, the kitchen, the bathroom, both kitchen, both bathroom, the tile, it's all done. And mostly, it stopped me this plumbing, and right now, I'm holding on that. And after that, the only problem is I have to go back to my, my family.
Okay.
They, I've got to be gone for like three, four months. And as soon as I come back, I told her, she stopped by, she looked at it, and she saw, she was happy with it. She said, I see it, you keep it clean, and you, you're working. She saw me working, bunch of, you know, people, we all, myself, I'm working until like late night. And then he said, she, she agreed with me. I said, I get it done. As soon as I come back, I have it done in a month, month and a half. She said, I don't think so. I said, I said, okay. She told me, we give you, I, she talked about herself. She said, I think I give you until June. And June it be done, everything be done, and I come over here, and if you make it, I mean, for, for June, I'm hearing anytime, and before June, I come, and I, by June, I have it done.
Okay.
The whole house going to be done.
Yeah, because that'll be about a month before your 16-month timeline that we had, you know, was a condition.
Yeah.
And then we'll be able to see where you're at.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay?
Definitely, the house going to be inside, the sheet rock and everything, the plumbing, electrical, everything going to be done. Mostly, might be left is just to get the casing around the windows, and those takes time. And I've got to work on it to get it nice, because I'm going to leave on the first floor, on the second floor, I'm going to rent it. I told them before. So I'm going to have the house done by then, definitely by then, it'll be all set.
Okay.
I make, I'm sure everybody look at it, they're going to be happy. Outside, the house is clean, it's all done, it's not, no problem, except I put the steps out in the front, all those rocks, and she looked at them. And I'm doing the railing right now, railing should be done by end of week. Actually, I put the post, we just got to weld it, the, the one goes inside of it. And that railing, it be done, the, the steps are all done. Mr. Solomon looked at it, he said, he was very pleased with it. And the back, I've got to get that- And the back, I gotta get that, I told them, I'm gonna get it done, the bridge, I already designed it, I gave the, I was gonna go with the 2x12 and put a Fletcher plate, you know, a Fletcher plate, put it in the, inside there with the plywood, put it inside the 2x12, I was gonna put three of them, and then Mr. Solomon told me, no, you can't do that, you gotta put the LVL, I said, no problem, I send it to plumbing company, not plumbing, to, now I'm so excited.
We know what you mean.
Yeah, I send it to them, and they designing it, they gotta give me the right size, and then I will change that, as soon as I'm, before you give me the CO, I guarantee that that be done. And the porch in the front, she's always mentioning that to me, she's not here tonight now, but I said, I will do that, as soon as I'm house, inside the house done, I'm gonna put the porch over, and I'm gonna put the bridge in the back.
Okay. Just remember, that bridge has to be completely deconstructed and rebuilt.
Exactly, that's what I'm gonna do.
Great, well, we appreciate the update.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm just gonna go around to the board, and then we should have you on your way.
Absolutely.
Okay, Mr. Byrne?
I'm good.
Mr. Reynolds?
Also good.
Thank you. Mr. Gallagher?
I'm good as well.
Great, I as well. Is there anybody in the audience here that has any questions regarding this particular review? I'm sorry? Somebody virtual? Oh, I have to say it. Is there anybody virtual that would like to speak?
Are they gonna give me the date for the next visit here?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we'll give that to you tonight.
I hope it's not that between these two, four months, I'm not here, because that was, I didn't.
It's gonna be June.
It'll be in June.
Yeah, I made a mistake last time, I didn't realize, I've mixed it up with July and August.
Yep.
And I was in here.
Your brother came, so.
We're gonna like to see you again, is going to be June? June 11th?
June 11th, definitely, no problem. By then, definitely, the house be done, when I come over here, I'm gonna say, you can come and look at it, and take a picture, it's gonna be very, all done.
Great, great, so at this time, I'm not gonna go through all of the conditions, I'm just gonna ask that we strike number 11 and replace that with June 11th, 2024, is that acceptable to the board?
Yes.
Great. If I could have a motion, please? Anybody, somebody?
Yep, make a motion, ZBA 2022-13.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
That we accept the petition as written, with the exception of item 11 to read, to be changed to June 11th, 2024.
Great, the motion was made by Mr. Reynolds virtually, could I have a second?
I'll second.
As a close tie, so.
Give it to him.
Mr. Gallagher made the second, all those in favor? Mr. Byrne?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes, in favor.
And I as well, great.
Appreciate it.
Have a good, safe trip.
Thank you very much.
We look forward to seeing this project completed.
Absolutely, thank you, have a nice night.
You too.
You too.
Okay, are we gaining momentum?
We are.
Next, ZBA 2023-26, Jason Andrews, 275 Clarendon Street, for a special permit under 181-333 to erect a deck encroaching on the front setback, leaving about 15 feet from the minimum requirement pursuant to 181-416 and 181-94 located in residential B District.
Hi.
Mr. Andrews?
Yep, I'm Jason Andrews, and live at 275 Clarendon Street in Pittsburgh. I was before this board about six years ago, it was a vacant home, I have since done a lot of work on that house. If you look at the certified plot plan that I provided, the setback on the house, I believe, is 16 feet 4 inches. What my intention is, is to build a farmer's porch that goes from where their current deck is, the current stoop, around the side of the house and connect to the corner, so it's not going to encroach at all, so I'm a little bit surprised that I needed a variance for that, I think there was some confusion in City Hall as well, because I got a notice or a message from somebody saying I didn't need it, and they requested that I have the certified plot plan updated to show the drawing of the deck, which they, the people who drew the plot plan declined to do, it wasn't worth their time, so I did submit the plans for this deck, and I'm just asking that I get the variance, so I can then get the permit, so we can have it built.
Okay, so just so you understand, it's, you did not request the variance, it's a special permit?
I understand, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
And it does look like you have some type of drawing that was updated?
There was.
They comment about somebody?
Yeah, there's a certified plot plan, and what they requested, somebody from the building requested that I update the certified plot plan to show the drawing of the deck, and the people who drew that plan declined to do it, they just say it wasn't worth their time.
Yeah, if you have a little deeper information.
So if this is the deck, so like if he was going all straight this way to like a square, that is what he's doing, is square the house with the deck.
Right.
So he had, but this, like you know, see the line is kind of like.
He's increasing the nonconformity, but he's not increasing the setbacks.
Correct.
Well, that is, we don't know, because see, like you know, the house is kind of like angle, little angle, so we don't know if he's going to stay on the 16.7, or it will be a little less than that, because it's not.
Okay.
I think it's too far.
Just have one.
Because he had one, like you know, his drawing, like you know, where, he's just doing this, like square this up.
Okay. So your application is simply to put the deck on, but not change any of the present setbacks, correct?
Right.
Okay, okay. All right, anything else to add right now?
No, other than this home, I purchased it, it was vacant for five years before I bought it, I've put about $150,000 in it, it's changed from a two-family to a single-family usage, it's improving the neighborhood's value, and I'd just like to continue on the journey of building this house for my family.
Well, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Appreciate your investment in the city. All right, gonna turn it over to the board, Mr. Byrne?
I like the fellow's attitude, and I don't think that it's an encroachment at all, let him build his farmer's porch, it's a beautiful piece of property, he's done a great job with it, my compliments to him.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne, Mr. Reynolds?
I'm also supportive, but I would just like to get a better understanding, probably due to the fact that I'm remote, the conversation that just happened in terms of location of the deck, could maybe, I'm looking at the certified plot plan, maybe you just describe that to me?
Sure, the deck, the current stoop, you can see that in the certified plot plan, where the front door is.
True.
We're gonna extend that stoop to the right, if you're inside the house, walking out, and then wrap it around to the corner of the house, so it won't encroach anymore on the frontage, and it'll conform with what's already there.
So that's running between you and your neighbor, the Saunders?
Yeah, along the driveway that you should see in the plot plan, it, there's plenty of space between me and my neighbor on that side of the house.
So it's along the side of the house with the driveway, where your neighbor's being the lords in the penalt.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Any questions, any other questions, Mr. Byrne?
Nope.
Mr. Gallagher?
I'm fine, Michael.
Thank you, Michael, I'm in support of this as well, and I don't have any questions, thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience here tonight to speak in regards to this petition, either in favor, opposed, or just ask some questions in general? Okay, gaining some momentum.
So we have somebody online, but I don't know what is that for.
Okay, so I'm gonna check virtually to see if there's anybody via Zoom that has any questions regarding this particular petition? Okay. All right, so just have to let you know that we have only four members tonight, okay, we don't have a full board, so you will need a unanimous vote, okay, of four to none. We always, the board always does extend to the applicant when we are short on members, because you are allowed one dissenting vote, when we have a five-member board, to either move ahead tonight, or to have a continuance and come back.
Thanks, I understand.
Would you like to move ahead?
Yeah, move ahead.
Great, thank you. Okay, so wanna just close and deliberate at this time, Mr. Byrne, do you have any questions, comments?
No, I think I've said all I needed to say about the project, I'm all for it.
Okay, any conditions? Mr. Byrne?
Just that he finishes it in a reasonable amount of time.
Okay.
Yeah, it should be finished in about three weeks.
Okay.
That's reasonable.
My contractor's waiting.
Mr. Chair, I'm also, I'm also in favor, and ready to move forward.
Great, great, any timeline on project completion, 30 days, 60 days?
I'm willing to say 90 days, give the man the space he needs, it's fine.
That sounds good. Mr. Gallagher?
Yes, thank you, Michael, I'm also in favor with a 90-day timeframe, I think it would be a nice addition to the neighborhood, to see a nice deck on the front of your house, you've done a nice job with it.
Thank you, sir.
And that's all I have, Mike.
Just making some notes here. Okay, I'm, yeah, I'm, this is a great project, if you look in the neighborhood, there are other properties that have similar, you know, situations where, you know, the setbacks aren't met, you know, due to the age of the neighborhood, it's a pre-existing nonconforming, we're not increasing any setbacks at all, so, you know, I think this is a good project as well, he's invested a lot of money in the property, we want to see him to continue to do that and stay in Pittsburgh. So, I'm gonna ask for a motion.
Motion of what?
To approve?
So moved.
I'm gonna just throw in some conditions that we discussed, and it's basically completion within 90 days, and, you know, the deck will not decrease any setbacks. And, you know, we're gonna, I don't want to use the plan it submitted, but a plot plan has been submitted, and, you know, the applicant has made note that the setbacks from the front or the side of the property or existing building would not change.
So moved.
Okay, can I have a second?
I'll second.
So motion was made virtually by Mr. Byrne, second by Mr. Gallagher, move to a vote, Mr. Byrne?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
And myself as well.
And myself in favor.
Yes, did I say that?
Don't forget Brian.
So it's unanimous, it's approved, just a couple of things, okay, after the hearing, you're gonna get a copy of your decision showing the date that it was filed, okay? After, there's a 20-day appeal period, in case there, anybody for whatever reason doesn't agree with this, they have the right to appeal, you can get a certified copy of your decision from the city clerk's office, okay? And then that copy, that certified copy of the decision, you want to record with the registry of deeds, okay, that way in the future, there's record of that change was made to your property.
Okay.
And then you just need to bring a copy of the decision with the registry of deeds, book and page number to the building department, and you're pretty good to go.
And when do I get, receive that, 20 days, or?
Yeah, yeah, we just need some time to be able to write up the paperwork and all that.
Okay.
Okay? And if you have any questions, just go down to the building department, they'd be happy to help, and you're ready to go.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Have a good evening, appreciate the time.
All right.
Great. Okay. Okay, so the next case, ZBA 23-27, Mark Brito for Eight Cobble Drive, and this is a special permit for an open contractor's yard to erect a 4,000-square-foot steel building to be used for storage pursuant to 191-94, located in industrial district. So, sir, you are here to represent the applicant?
Yes, sir, for the record, Chris Anderson with Hannigan Engineering.
Sorry, one more time?
Chris Anderson with Hannigan Engineering.
Chris Anders?
Anderson.
Anderson, okay, sorry.
No worries.
Let's see, so, before we get started, we just received the information today, okay? The plan, haven't really had a chance to review it, okay? So what I want to ask the board is, does the board want to move tonight, does the board need a chance to look at the project, does the board want to do a site visit? Because I know myself, I'm not really prepared to move ahead with something I really haven't had a chance to digest. So I just want to kind of go around and ask that of the board, Mr. Byrne?
Michael, you stole my thunder, that's exactly what I was going to say, so I'm with you on that, so gonna have to hold off and reschedule this, so we get a look at it.
Okay, Mr. Reynolds?
I think that with half the current board in that position, that I'd support holding off, but I would also say that I am familiar with the area, and this does look reasonable, but agreed that we should double-check the details.
Okay, Mr. Gallagher?
Yes, I support withholding off tonight also, Michael.
Okay, we do only have a minimum quorum tonight, so most likely, if we reschedule this, I mean, it sounds like we're gonna, that you'll be able to, you know, have a full board, but in fairness to you and to the board, we'd just like to have the information a little ahead of time, so we can look through it, and not kind of be on the spot, having to filter through everything last minute, and, you know, try to make a good decision on that.
Okay, no, understood.
So we're gonna try to obviously get you on as quick as possible, and Mercedes is just gonna check, see what we've got. There's nothing in November. There's nothing in November. What's the last case? What time is it at? Do you know?
Eight fifteen.
Eight fifteen. That's the last one? So we could put him on for eight thirty? We have an opening in November at eight thirty. I mean...
What day? Sorry.
That's okay. It's okay. It is November...
November fourteenth.
November fourteenth, Tuesday. And it could, you know, we try to get these cases in fifteen minutes, but
Yeah, no.
Could be looking late. But, you know, I don't know the urgency of the project, so we definitely wanna give you the opportunity to get in as soon as possible. We could schedule you. And then if you decide you wanna move it to the following month, at least you'd have kind of a time slot.
Yep, I would, I'm just thinking of all the other boards because we also have to go before Planning Board, and Planning Board will not act upon this, their application until ZBA's had their say. With that being said, yeah, I would accept November fourteenth at eight thirty. That way I can try to hit the Planning Board meeting in November.
Okay. And we're flexible. If something comes up and you need to say, "I can't do it," then, you know, obviously we'll get you in the next month.
Yep.
Okay?
Want to put in November or December, just in case?
We're gonna do November at eight thirty. Yeah.
And in between there and now, the board would like to do a sit walk just to take a look at the property and
Yes.
Get a feel for the area.
Yeah.
Okay. I would request that I be part of that. So I guess if the board can just reach out to me whenever...
Do you have a couple of business cards handy tonight?
Yes, sir, I can grab a couple of those.
And we'll try to, we'll try to get out there, you know, pretty quick. Thank you so much. The boss gets them. Okay, if I could just, Andrew, ask you... Christopher, I'm sorry. If I could just kindly ask you to sign this document. It's just basically given us an extension of time, okay? Should we put this to December in case we do have to bump it? I didn't answer you. Oh, I'm sorry. This is just saying, hey, we both agree we're gonna bump it out. You okay with December?
You okay with December?
If we obviously can't get November to work, December. This is a square bracket at this point in time anyway, so.
Yeah, yeah. I just wanna put December because then we don't have to chase each other to sign another one in case you can't. So that's all we're doing. And this is... Today's tenth, right? Wherever you see fit to be able to sign it. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. If I could have a motion to, for a continuance until November fourteenth at eight thirty, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Byrne. Roll call, all those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Byrne says aye. Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes, in favor.
Me as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. How did we get ahead of this?
Because you're good.
Folks, our next case is scheduled for seven fifteen, so technically we do have to wait till seven fifteen. So we're gonna go to a commercial. I would entertain that.
So that's going to be November or December?
Nice. Okay, so the next case tonight is ZBA 2023 dash twenty-eight. Jessica Beesall for the property at 30 Harrow Gary Street. And it's a special permit under 18178 to conduct a home occupation business for a studio salon pursuant to 18194, located in residential B. So I assume you're Jessica?
I am, yep. Jessica Beesall, 30 Harrow Gary Street.
Great. Just one moment, please. Okay, so could you please just tell us a little bit about your application, what you would like to do?
Sure. So I have been a lifelong resident of Fitchburg. I bought this home about eight years ago, and I have been in the salon industry for seventeen years. I'm a multi-licensed professional. I obtain a cosmetology, nail, and aesthetics license, all within good standing with the Board of Health and the State Board. I've been in management for fifteen years, and I am at the point in my career where I have nurtured and filled everyone else's cup, and I am looking to put that back into me and in the investment that I already have in the city of Fitchburg.
Great, thank you very much. We appreciate the upbeat presentation. I'm sure the board will have some questions. We'll come back to you, so just... We're gonna move on to the board for some questions. I'm gonna start with Mr. Byrne.
Come back to me, Michael.
Okay. Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, thanks, Mike. I think that just some of the general questions would be, you know, around the special permit, would be just to get some idea of, you know, the hours of operation. You know, what do you see in terms of... When I say clientele, I don't mean who's showing up. I mean sort of like frequency, is it, you know, what's the impact in terms of, you know, cars on the road or in the driveway? You know, so on and so forth. Could you maybe just spend a moment? Miss Beesall, just explaining, you know, what's a, a day in the life of? You know, what's it look like in terms of, you know, the comings and goings of your business? When do you open up? How many people do you see coming in and out? When do you see things closing down? You know, how many days a week do you expect to be open? Something like that, that'd be helpful.
Sure. So at this point in time, I would be closed on Sundays and Mondays, so I would be open Tuesday through Saturday. On a typical day, I see anywhere between five to eight clients, depending on the services that they receive. I will say that because I'm multi-licensed, I do have clients who see me for a longer period of time. So I'm not getting a huge abundant of people that are coming, you know, throughout the day. I currently have a driveway that would fit my car and another occupant's car. If I need to extend my driveway, I do have the space available to do so. I also have three off-street parking spots available, or on-street, excuse me, in front of my yard. But typically, a normal day looks anywhere between the hours of ten and seven. I did write on my application, closing time of eight thirty, and I did that for the mere fact that I wanted to make sure that if I was closing up, I had time to clean, that I was completely done, all operation, with no noise whatsoever by eight thirty.
PM.
PM, yes.
Okay, very helpful. And thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I just wanna, you know, make reference to the board as we kind of go around that, you know, this is home occupation. So, you know, take a look at page 108 and 18178 and everything all the way down through 181782, okay? In case anybody needs some reference, because we're gonna need to look at that specific criteria. Mr. Gallagher, do you
Yes.
Have some questions?
Yeah. Good evening.
Good evening.
Unfortunately, I was at your house today, but there wasn't anyone home, so I couldn't get a good feel for what you were trying to do. It's my understanding that you're looking to use your garage?
Yes.
Okay. What is the square footage of the building?
I don't know off the top of my head the exact square footage of the garage. It is a two-car garage, so it is big enough especially to hold just me and the services that I would provide. Yeah.
So probably eighteen by eighteen?
I would say about that, yes.
Okay. Is the building currently heated?
Is it currently heated?
Heated, yeah.
It is not, no. I do have electricity that is being able to be, or is run out to the garage. I don't have plumbing at this point.
Okay, so what is the plan for all that?
So basically, this was just my first step. I just wanted to see what this looked like before I invested money into having, into it happening and then it not falling through. So eventually what I would have to do, or what I would do, I would contact, you know, the water and sewer department, have them come take a look, see what the plumbing would look like. I'm assuming that they would take it right from the road and not from my house. As far as electrical, that's all set. And then really, it's just having a contractor come and make it up to code and make it look nice.
Okay, is the building currently on a slab? Is it a cement floor, or is it concrete? Concrete or pavement?
Yep, so it's currently on concrete.
Okay. I guess I would have liked to have seen the building on the inside to get a better idea about what I'm looking at, but I did see it from the outside. I did note that your property was very clean and your yard looks great, so...
Thank you.
Sure your neighbors are happy with you about that.
Thank you.
I have no other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. You didn't submit a parking plan, but can you kind of give me a lay of the, the garage is real close to the neighbor's property, and it's real close to the street? And then there's a driveway between the garage and the house?
Yep.
So conceptually, what's the concept for the parking?
So the concept would be keeping my garage, I'm sorry, keeping my driveway as is, and then I can always extend further up into my yard. Or I can always extend further out this way. I have plenty of yard, which has been a blessing and a curse some days, but I have plenty of yard where I can extend the driveway either way. At this point in time and for the foreseeable future, it's just me and my car. So I definitely have at least minimum one space available for a client. With the extension, I'll be able to at least fit at least one other car. But I will be servicing people one at a time, so I don't see there being an issue with, you know, multiple cars, you know, parked along, along the way.
Yeah, yeah. Have, have you done any investigative work with regards to, you know, the project cost? You know, because you do have to bring in sewer, have a sewer connection, water, water connection, electrical brought up to code, you know, the building built to today's current codes to, to see if the project is viable?
Yep, so I did have a contractor just come to the house to take a look and see what his thoughts were. I did have another thought of maybe extending. I have a three-season room, extending the three-season room and doing that. But with his inspection, brief inspection, he had felt that the garage was the best option just because it's already an existing structure. But I have not monetarily gotten any quotes from, you know, plumbers, electricians. I really just wanted to figure out if this was doable, feasible, before I really started investing money into the project.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. We appreciate it. Any other questions from the board? Okay, so what...
I have one. Do you foresee there being an overlap in between clients, meaning that someone else would have to park, you know?
Uh, so there, I mean, potentially, yeah, there could be an overlap where, um, I typically don't run late, um, but someone could be, especially if they're coming from out of town and they don't know where it is, they may show up 15 minutes early, 10 minutes early for their appointment, um, so there could potentially be an overlap. I could always book appointments, you know, 15 minutes longer, so that way I really make sure that that does not happen, um, and like I said, with the extension of the driveway, it shouldn't be a problem.
I'm just trying to determine the need for additional parking.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
In a situation like that. That's all the question I have for you, though.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. So I guess at this point, I have to ask if there's any... ...anybody virtual? To raise their hand? Is there anybody virtual? Has any questions? Okay, we see that... Susan Gravel?
Yeah, I'm here.
You're here tonight?
Yes, I am.
So... If you have any questions, um, comments or concerns, um, you're allowed two minutes to speak, okay? And, um, if I could just ask that if she has some questions, allow her to speak, and then we'll allow you a response, okay? If you could just state your address, please, Susan Gravel?
Yes, I live at 31 Haru Gary Street, which is right across the street from her house, exactly, directly across the street.
Okay, great. We appreciate your time tonight. Please let us know what questions or comments you might have.
Okay, um, I've lived on Haru Gary Street for 18 years. I've been a lifelong resident of Fitchburg since I was a sophomore in high school, graduated from Fitchburg High back in 1980. I am 61 years old. I'm currently a RN, I've been a RN for 26 years. I think putting a business on this street is absolutely absurd. We have a very busy daycare already down one end of Haru Gary Street. On the top of Haru Gary Street, on the other end, which is where she's talking about, her house, her driveway, her garage, those people there park five to six cars along the road from the tip of Haru Gary and Pratt all the way down, right to probably to the edge of her property. There's also, uh, new apartments that are going in on the, on the end of, um, Haru Gary, right in the back, which are talking more traffic there. Haru Gary's a very short, very busy street. Cars go down there very fast. Snow time, you're gonna get, her people are gonna be parking in the front of her house. I mean, I just think it's very, very busy to do this, and if she's servicing five to eight clients during that time, you're gonna have at least five to eight cars coming and going, you know, throughout the day. I just think, I mean, somebody really needs to take a look at this very short street, very busy street already, and I think by putting in a home business there, I think it's just, it's gonna cause a lot more traffic. As it is, Haru Gary's short, then it cuts down, you know, down to the left. Cars zing down there just to get, you know, down like to the top of, um, Clarengen Street or down that way. And now if you go down there and check out that area, they're putting in at least 10 to 15 new apartments, and now you're talking more traffic that's gonna be coming down Haru Gary to cut over to get to those apartments, 'cause that's the fastest way to get there. And I think the city really needs to look at how small, how short this street is, and putting in a business, I just think is very, very wrong. And like I said, I've lived there for 18 years, and I can get a petition if needed, the amount of traffic that this is gonna cause, the amount of speed that goes down this street. We wanted to get a speed bump.
Okay, thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it. Is there anybody else, um, virtual that would like to speak with regards to this petition? Please raise your hand. I see there's a Gary Ledger on tonight. Is, are you on for this case?
I am not.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, I'm gonna turn over to the audience now. Is there anybody here in the audience to speak about this case? Property at Haru Gary Street? Going once? Going twice? Okay. So, um, I guess I'm gonna give you a chance to kind of respond, um, to the comments that were made.
Uh, I completely understand her concern, and I just wanna make sure that, um, that it's voiced, that that's why I'm going through the city, um, and making sure that it's done the proper way. I've been a great neighbor, I mind my own Ps and Qs, I stay in my own little bubble, if you will. I certainly don't cause any of the problems that she had mentioned, unfortunately, um, so I understand her concerns. I think they're concerns of everyone, but, uh, to be honest, it doesn't have anything to do with me.
You live on the street.
Thank you. Susan, do you have a brief comment?
Yes.
Brief, please.
Okay. I just would like the city to come take a look at the amount of traffic that was already there. Like I said, I mind my own business too, but you know what? I mean, having all this extra traffic, I think is just gonna become a safety issue. And it involves everybody on that street, from the top to the bottom.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Okay, um, does the board have any other questions of the applicant? I guess I'm gonna ask Mr. Reynolds or Mr. Byrne.
Mr. Byrne speaking.
Yes.
How many chairs are going to be in the salon?
Just one.
Antrick, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Before I go any further, okay? The board typically consists of five members, okay? And a, you need a supermajority, you need a four-to-one vote, okay, in order for the petition to pass. We only have four members tonight, so you do need a unanimous vote, okay? And when we just have a basic quorum, I do, the board will always ask the applicant if they would like to continue it for one or two months until we have a full board, so that you do have more options.
I'm comfortable with moving forward. Whatever is meant to be will be at this point, so...
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. But I do like to extend that, or I should say, the board wants to extend that to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you have any closing comments before we kind of close and deliberate?
Uh, no, I'm just, uh, happy for this opportunity, and I love the city of Fitchburg, and if it doesn't work out for me here, then I hope it works out for me somewhere else in the city, um, and thank you for your time.
Well, we appreciate the optimism.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so I wanna kind of close and deliberate, um, and go around the room. Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, thanks, Mike. I would like to see if we could just get some more information. You know, just get a, just get a feel for, uh... A little more, sorry, a little background action here. Just get a, maybe a little bit more, uh, maturity in terms of, uh, what, what does this look like, you know, what is it gonna cost, you know? Is it feasible? So on and so forth. Because it seems like there is good intent, it seems like there's some, some ways that it could work, it seems like there's also, uh, some limitations, and I think that taking all of this feedback, um, uh, in kind of considering it is, would be prudent, would be smart, and then, you know, then come back and revisiting it. I think the other, just sort of point of guidance, if you will, uh, would be, I think that we could maybe assist the applicant tonight, um, if we were just able to just voice what the, uh, um, hurdles are to, you know, to meet the criteria, to vote in favor of it, um, and putting all those things together, for me, would mean, uh, let's share that all tonight, and then perhaps ask the applicant to come back at the next session, at a future session, uh, you know, to respond to some of these inputs from tonight.
Okay, so, um, have the applicant reviewed the special permit criteria under 181?
Yes, but I think also, I think that we should verbalize it tonight.
You mean read both pages?
Um, you can highlight it, just maybe hit the high points or to help guide, uh, to help illustrate the parameters, yep.
Yeah. I would probably say, in light of trying to keep the meeting going, um, if we're not gonna vote tonight, I maybe would make a recommendation for the applicant to look at the bylaws online, um, which would be 181-78.
Okay.
Okay? And just kind of go through it to try to understand it, um, and, Mr. Reynolds, do you need to make a site visit? Maybe get a little better lay of the land, or...
That would be helpful, yep.
Okay, okay, okay. I just, I wanna go around, you know, the board members, you know, to get a...
Thank you.
Flavor to their thoughts as well.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Reynolds. Uh, Mr. Byrne?
Michael, the, uh... The applicant comes to us requesting us to give her a special permit on a so-called location. She says she's going to use her garage, but she really hasn't done, uh, enough research on that to actually say she's going to do it, because when you consider the capital necessary, and the cost of capital right now is so high, about, she's gonna have to insulate the garage, she's gonna have to put up a new, uh, bring up the, bring up the building to code, and so many other things, that she doesn't even really realize what is going to be, the monies necessary to pour into that, that I think we ought to postpone it and give her a chance, not only to read our regulations, but to figure out exactly how much it's going to cost for her to have that salon put into that garage.
Well, thank you for your feedback. Mr. Gallagher?
Yes, thank you, Michael. Uh, you know, I agree with both Jimmy and Joe on this, um, and I also would feel more comfortable if I could come out and take a look at the space.
Sure.
Maybe look at the viability between both spaces that you had mentioned. I think definitely additional parking would be required. I'd like to look at that as well.
Okay.
So...
Sure.
That's my feeling on it.
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, so, so here's kind of my thoughts. I'm trying to think about, love your presentation and your optimism, okay?
Right, me too.
I think it's, I, I, you know, I cherish that. I, we have a list of guidelines that we have to go by, a strict criteria, it's, um, that we have to adhere to and make our decision based on. I also, you know, obviously, as a volunteer for the city, I always put myself in, as in a butter, right? And how that impact is, um, if I lived next door. What I'm trying to discern is that...
Oh, there's a patient out there that wants to talk, babe?
Can you mute her? Is within the city, where do I see two uses on one property? You know, where we have two structures and two, two things going on. It's a little unusual. Some of the challenges I see is that, it's the setbacks, you know, the building is, it's a residential neighborhood, um, but we're looking at putting, um, you know, a business, but very, very close to the butter. And there's almost no setback from the road as well. So I'm just kind of throwing out what my thoughts are.
Yeah.
The board wants to kind of think about it, see it again.
Sure.
Look into it, so we're gonna do that with optimism.
Sure.
Okay? So what we're gonna do is I'm gonna ask for a continuance, it's gonna have to be December.
Okay.
But it kind of looks like you're pretty far, you know, you've got a lot to probably want to investigate anyway.
Sure.
To understand, and, um, do you have a card that we can reach you at to maybe schedule some time to...
Yes, I think I might have some in my purse.
Okay.
If not, I will make sure, I've been emailing with Mercedes, so I can...
So what we're gonna do is we're gonna, um, I'm gonna ask you to just sign a, an extension. Can we go out this far? Yeah, but I don't think we can go another month, but that's probably only procedurally, so we have to hear the case within a certain timeline.
Oh, we've already heard it once.
No, this is a special permit.
Okay, okay.
But I put it the wrong year, it's 24, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
So this is just saying, hey, we both agree we're gonna just move it out a little bit. We always put the timeline a little longer, just in case something comes up with you and you have to reschedule.
Sure.
Okay?
Sure.
So... And take your time if you want to read it, you know? I want to make sure that you're not signing out to any cash disbursements, sorry.
If only, right?
That's why we keep it three sentences. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, so at, at this time, I think I just ask for a motion from the board for a continuance until, we're doing December.
December 12.
December 12.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second is made by Mr. Byrne virtually. Okay. Roll call, all those in favor, Mr. Byrne?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Gallagher?
In favor.
Aye as well. Okay. So we're gonna see you before then, and we'll have some communication to be able to kind of get a better look. It sounds like some want to see the building, do, you know, maybe see the interior, which is a garage.
Yeah.
And, um, if you have some other thoughts, too, you had talked about, you know...
Yeah.
Other locations within the property, you know, at that time would be a good time to kind of show everybody your thoughts.
Great.
Okay?
Awesome, thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, appreciate your time, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Okay, so this is the 14th.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Reynolds?
When was this, uh, the last case, uh, put forward to, was it November or December?
December? 12.
Thank you.
Of course, to myself, I said the 14. Okay. Okay, so the next case is a continuance at ZBA 2023-23, Mr. David Bellata for Zero Gale Street, um, and this is a request for a variance.
My name's Elisha Erb, I'm an attorney in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and I represent the petitioner.
I'm sorry, your name again?
Elisha, spelled E-L-I-S-H-A, last name is Erb, spelled E-R-B.
Thank you, Elisha.
It's my understanding that this petition was reviewed by your board previously, and you conceptually approved it, we have a technical problem.
I believe it was the planning board that approved a different plan.
No, no, what the problem was, is under the city's zoning by law, you have what is called infill lots. This lot fills all the requirements of an infill lot with one exception. That one exception is, that you have to have the road to the lot either on an approved subdivision plan, or on a street that the city clerk has certified meets the standards of a city street. The problem was, subdivision control came in about 50 years ago, and therefore you had subdivision approval plans. This lot was created more than 50 years ago, it was created 100 years ago. Therefore, we don't have the plan. But the objective of having it on an approved plan, and the objective of having on the alternative, on a street, a city, is that the road to the lot meets city standards. And I'm making a suggestion to you, that in, if you approve this, that you have this language. I'll read it for those who aren't here, and I'm going to give it to those who are here. The language I'm suggesting you put in your decision is, a building permit for a structure on the subject land shall not be issued until after the Pittsburgh Public Works Department has issued its determination that the city of Pittsburgh's water and sewer lines have been extended to the subject land, and that the private part of Milton Street, between the end of Milton Street and the subject land, 95 feet by the way, have been constructed to city standards. If you put that in your decision, you've met the objective of the requirement for standard infill lot, of it being on a public street, or on a street that the city clerk has certified as the public, the equivalent of a public street, or on an approved plan. So what we're doing is, just suggesting to you, we'll go to the exact same destination by a slightly different route, because the route that is in your bylaws is, was enacted 50 years after this lot was created.
Okay. So can you speak to frontage of a lot?
The, the frontage of the lot, from this plan, it shows 121 feet.
Okay.
And, and a copy is in your petition, by the way, if you look at that plan that I just referred to.
So is there a new type of plan that we're presenting here, or a newly created lot?
No, you're not presenting any plan at all. What we're, what the problem is, the lot was created before subdivision, therefore there is no subdivision plan.
Okay, which, which lot, sir?
Lot, parcel ready. This shows existing parcels. The problem is, that the parcels were created long before subdivision, therefore we don't have an approved subdivision plan. We can show existing plans. It's purely a timing issue, that's the problem.
Okay, so, so let's, 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 let's just kind of slow down a little bit, so that we can all understand what we're doing. There's three lots.
Yeah, the two of them have already been, we're only talking one lot.
Okay.
Those were existing, these two are most, right here.
Okay.
Which mystery.
Yep.
Okay, I'm sorry, can you go off?
So these two lots were approved back in 2008?
Okay.
These two, correct. And then...
Out of what?
Out of, say that again, please.
So, those two lots were created out of one lot?
Yeah.
In 2008?
Yes. This is one lot, Dave, right? Back in 2008.
Okay.
It was subdivided on a existing road.
Okay, and when you subdivided, did you create this lot right here?
Yes.
You created that lot?
Now, I'm confused. So this parcel was one big parcel, okay? They went to the planning board, they approved this because they had existing road frontage. Okay, yeah, I know, because I saw those two lots. Yeah, that's right. So then, this parcel had to be cut because it didn't have But, but then, you have, it showed just this, that's the problem. It didn't show that, that's the reason. Now, how that started? We don't have a plan that shows that separate. What the issue is, is you want to get, we have access coming in, and what I'm proposing is, that your department of public works certified that this meets all the city standards, water, sewer, access, pavement, whatever. It's short, right? I mean, you are that, I mean, I 95 years. Yeah, 95, whatever. They won't give you, so we're going to, so we're going to have to call it 33, 40 feet of frontage here.
But that's not frontage.
If it's paved out, though.
And it needs to be frontage on an approved road.
But it doesn't have to meet the frontage requirements under, that they fill a lot, this is a fill-in lot. So, you're saying you're bound
You need no frontage on an infill lot.
Yeah, I'm not saying that, wait one second, here are the provisions for infill lot. I don't want to be accused of...
We will never accuse you of anything.
Yes, the frontage of the infill lot. Must have, the frontage, I'm, I'm reading
So I'm going to read this, so everybody can hear it. It says, "The purpose of the infill lot provision is to facilitate the reuse, the reuse of a vacant, condemned, or substandard property within existing urban or blighted areas as single-family dwelling units. To reduce vagrancy, litter, abandoned, or substandard structures. To lessen density and promote single-family owner-occupied ownership in urban areas, and to improve the neighborhood character." So, you've come in with a lot of new ideas, information, sounds like you might still need a little more time to kind of talk about some things.
Michael, the question on the table is that piece of property that they have the two, two families on, on, on Gale Street up there on the top of it, right where he has his finger pointing right now. And the piece of property that's in question, which is behind those two pieces of property, where he has his finger pointed now, were they at any time, in one parcel?
Yes.
Yes. Then he made that infill lot himself?
Correct. That's correct.
Then, yeah, that's illegal. We can't, we can't vote on it.
No, it's not, I wouldn't use the word illegal. He created the lot.
Yeah, right, he created
Whether it's usable or not, it was created by the applicant.
Correct.
So, Mr. Urb, I'm going to read on, because you've asked me to.
Next paragraph, sir.
In the RB district, is this RB district?
It is.
Okay. "Pursuant to the special permit and site plan review from the planning board, an existing lot with at least 5,000 square feet may serve as the location for a single-family dwelling. Any of the dimensional requirements of this ordinance, including but not limited to, lot frontage with and building setbacks, may also be reduced or eliminated by this special permit, provided that the planning board makes a determination that the proposed dwellings are consistent in scale and setbacks with the abutting structures and those in the immediate neighborhood. The planning board may impose conditions for the use of such infill lots, including but not limited to landscaping and maximum lot coverage."
That is correct, and you're very comfortable with what the planning board, if the planning board would grant infill lot. The issue is, under development requirement, you have to meet a requirement as to an existing road.
Yeah.
That's impossible because of the timing. That's the issue.
So do you want me to read the rest of the sections?
Sure.
It says, "Infill lots must have frontage on an existing approved way, in which the planning board determines to provide suitable access to the building portion of the lot. Approved ways include a public way, or a way which the city clerk certifies is maintained and used as a public way, or a way shown on a plan thereto approved and endorsed in accordance with the subdivision control law. A paper street is not an approved way."
You, and we cannot meet that requirement, we are a public, we are a paper street, no way this about building a street as a public street. In the proposal that I submitted to you, we're saying we have to build that public street to the requirements of your department of public works commissioner. You know, we have to upgrade that street to meet the standard if this is a public street. That's the proposal. Everything else, we've made before the planning board, rather than the zoning board, you know.
So where's the frontage?
The frontage, you're coming up a little street, and the frontage, remember, under an infill lot, that's what the frontage requires.
No, it says that the planning board may approve a reduction in frontage.
That is correct.
Yeah, this is the zoning board.
I'm aware of that, sir.
And then, there's also
You say, wait, you go to the planning board and get them to approve it, you just know?
No.
See, I'm, I mean, if I go to the planning board, the planning board says, we can't do it because you got to have that requirement, because you people, you tell me I can't do it, you got to go through, that's my problem.
Sure. Well, right now, the application before us is for a variance based on frontage. So, we, we can, no, that's what the application is. So, we can proceed with the application, or you have the right to ask for leave to withdraw, and you can reapply under a new application, under a new section.
One of my problems is, between two boards, which one's got the jurisdiction?
Sure. The, well, first of all, I guess your, your question that you might want to ask yourself is, does it meet the criteria under 1814251, that it is an infill lot?
That we have to ask the planning board.
You would want to ask the building commissioner first.
Well, you know, I'm
Yeah, letter of determination, that would be my recommendation.
Well, the thing I think, you know, can we do it this way? I'm hoping to get a designation to the proposed where you, yeah, but I'm sure. Either that, or I'm saying that you people will grant it, right, as provided that the planning board finds that it qualifies as an infill lot. I'm just trying to get around the wording of the statute.
I understand.
It's in that bar.
I appreciate that, I appreciate it.
I'm not trying to pull any stops.
No, we know that, we know that. You're trying to assist the applicant.
Exactly. The, if you could say, you grant it, right, and subject to, the, the, subject to the planning board granting the infill lot, then
Well, it would be two, it's two separate applications.
I'm aware.
So the application, if you want to apply for, through an infill lot provision, you would make an app, you would go to the building department, get a letter of determination, and then go to the planning board. To proceed for a request for, to build on a lot that doesn't meet the frontage requirements, that would be through us.
The frontage isn't the issue. The issue is
The application for us.
The issue is, I don't have a public street.
That's correct.
And so the answer is, if you keep going, it would be so kind.
We are kind.
Yeah, I, I could tell you some stories, it was a long time, I'm 84 years old, so a lot of stories.
Appreciate you coming down.
The thing that says, you grant the grant, subject to the conservation commission, the fine is, if you fill a lot, you know, the requirements mean so. They're saying it's a jury to understand, and they're just saying that, that varies from the requirement of, that the, that the city clerk certified the state's a public street, or that it shows on an approved subdivision plan. If you do those, then I can go into the planning board, and I said, planning board, if you, if you guys approve it, the zoning board has approved, authorized you to do it, in fact.
Yeah.
Does it make sense what I'm saying?
It makes sense, but I think the, the correct avenue is that if you don't want to proceed with the application that was made before the board, you should probably ask for leave to withdraw, and then reapply either to the board under a different bylaw, or to the planning board under a different bylaw.
Right.
But that way, if, if we move to a vote tonight, and it's not favorable, it may have a negative impact on your ability to proceed.
I'm just trying to figure out, if we go planning board, then have planning board, say, if they deny us, because we don't meet the requirements
Just they're denying, and that's what put in, for this, the engineers put that in.
Sprinting, so that, that's a correct statement, no disrespect.
So, I, we, we have two more cases tonight.
Yeah.
And I got to stay on track. So you guys tell us how you want us to
This is standing for us.
Standing for continuation?
You want to continue.
What I need to do is, can we talk to the planning board and figure out which way to go here? I mean, this is a
I, what's the timeline? This is a variance, right?
It is a variance, but when they sign a, a mutual agreement, I think it's
Why would it?
No, it does.
If I withdraw, I've got a two-year deadline.
No, sir, you can reapply.
Okay, don't have a two-year deadline anymore.
No, if we deny it.
Oh, a two-year
Yeah, then it's a That's why I'm saying if
Let's withdraw, and then let's go talk to the planning board, and see if we can figure
Building Commissioner.
Building Commissioner.
To get a determination.
Yeah.
You want to do that?
Yeah, we'll go that way.
Go on.
So, just a quick thing, so
Sure.
This part, where the road, where the pavement ends.
Mm-hmm.
Bring it up. Then we would still have just 33 feet of road frontage.
Yeah, but see, that's not frontage. But let the, the building commissioner will explain it to you.
Yeah.
What I believe, and I'm only one member, and again, I want to keep this going, is you have to improve this to create the frontage.
I'm going to disagree only because the order says that the
The order we're ready to disagree, but that's back to the infill
Remember to go live frontage.
Yes.
But not live frontage, and that would make your variance.
Yeah. So how do you wish to proceed?
So I think we want to draw.
Okay.
And we'll come back a different way. If we looked at doing, improving the draw
Yeah.
Really doesn't sit well with the leaders.
Yeah.
We're going to be taking your opinion, so we're trying to stay in agreement.
I, yeah, but this will at least give you some time to
Reflect.
Yeah, and look at some different options, you know, without us having to, to, to make a vote on it, and
At least we can come back
We would love to see you come
Report planning board's decision.
Well, you get two options, you still have the planning board and the zoning board option, which is good.
We'll go planning board, and then, and we probably, we, we, we're going to get it, because they got to have that, have them tell us, the only reason why they won't give it to us is because we need to get a variance
Building Commissioner. That's my best advice.
I think we're going to go to, yeah.
So, we have a, a request from the applicant for leave to withdraw.
Hey, Michael, I make, I make a motion on ZBA 2323, be given leave to withdraw.
Second.
The second is by Mr. Reynolds. I'm going to go for a vote. Mr. Byrne?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Gallagher?
In favor.
And I as well. Motion carries forward.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. We, we're always looking for applicants that need representation, you know?
I got to tell you a story. Just take a second. This is about 40 years ago, I was the fourth president of zoning field, I was the Pittsburgh City Council.
Mm-hmm.
And they called 14 of all posts, absolutely over the transit, all posted them, and we looked after that city. And we looked after that city. My client, here's what he said. I have a very lovely daughter. She's in college. She's coming home for Christmas. I want to live to see her. I withdraw my petition because he knew he was losing.
Sir, thank you so much for coming down.
Yeah.
We appreciate it. Okay, next case, ZBA 2023-29, Peter Collette for the property at 71 Central Ave.
Hi, good evening.
Mr. Collette, I presume?
Yes, Peter Collette, 71 Central Avenue Extension. Yes.
Thank you for taking the time to come down tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, so please tell us a little bit about your petition.
Okay, well, um, our house at 71 Central Avenue, which, as you can see probably by my submitted, uh, plot plan, uh, I also own the property. My, my dad bought the house back in, when I was three years old. I, I grew up in the, at 89, 8890 Warner Avenue, which shares the rear setback. I, we purchased the land from a neighbor, um, back in 02, 03 and, and constructed the house and raised our family there. Our three kids who have since graduated from college and now we'd like to, my wife and I, now that we can afford, without college payments, we can afford to do a little home improvement. Was looking to put a deck on the back of our house. I'm aware that the, the setback is 35 feet from the, the rear setback. Currently, we're at 40. We were hoping to put a 10-foot deck, 10-foot deep by 16-foot wide deck, uh, coming off of our bump out. The deck will only be about two feet, a little less than two feet tall off the ground. I don't know if anybody got a chance to go out to the location or not.
I did.
I have a picture if, if you didn't. Um, when I look back here, it looks like.
Yeah, unfortunately, you weren't.
I'm sorry. The, I believe the chairman came by too also, and I met her out there and she had a chance, she had a chance to look at it and I just talked to her about it briefly.
Yeah, I was definitely in the right place.
Yeah, so, um, there is, you know, like I said, we share, I own the property that, that shares the, the back setback and there's two new houses next to us. They just constructed last year, um, and nice neighbors. You can really, this sort of sit up, uh, we, we kind of sit down low. I don't even know if you can see the deck from their houses or not, but, um, so that's, that's about the, I want to thank Mercedes, is that right? Mercedes, I want to thank you for all your help and answering my dumb questions when I called and, and, and guiding me through this process. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. I'm sure we're gonna have some questions. Um, so I think I'm gonna kick it off with Mr. Byrne.
Aren't I lucky? Well, I don't really see too many. Now, when you explained these property lines, you said you grew up in the house that you're living in?
No, I'm sorry. The, the, the house that shares the, um, rear setback.
Rear setback, okay.
Yeah, I don't know if you have.
That, that property's in your family now?
Yes, my mom still lives there. Um, yes. I grew up there, like I said.
I haven't seen that, I haven't seen that picture, so I, I can't tell you. But it, does the deck go towards their property?
Yes.
Yes? So you'd be encroaching on, on them?
The rear setback.
Of them?
Correct.
Okay, I understand. Thank you, that's enough.
Yeah.
Do we have a denial letter? I'm just, Mr. Reynolds?
Stop this one. It's a denial application. He applied for a big.
He's finding the.
Yeah, thanks, uh, thanks, Mike.
You're welcome, sir.
Just as I'm, I'm looking at the plot plan, uh, this is, the, the front setback is, shows just over 30 feet. Could someone refresh me what, what's the requirement here? Uh, 35? 35, so we have a little bit of a delta in the front, right? The, what I'm really just kind of intrigued by is just the, the shape of the lot. Where, where it seems like the house is perpendicular to, to Central Ave, but the lot in the back runs at an angle. I think the, that would be one thing I would look at. Long story short, a 10 by 16 deck doesn't appear to have any negative impact on the So I'm interested in, in shape is what I'm trying to say. But that didn't really manifest itself in any questions, did it?
You're not.
I'm sure.
It's chair.
I'm sure it will. Okay, um, Mr. Gallagher?
Thank you, sir. Peter, when I come out there today, I kind of was hoping to see you, see.
Yeah, I apologize, I was working, yeah.
You know, kind of walk through with me. If you'd be so kind to step forward.
Sure.
And, uh, this was my interpretation of it, but you can certainly tell me if I'm right or wrong. I was thinking about a 10-foot extension off of the back of your house.
Yeah, the bump out mostly be in the center of.
So this bump out?
Yeah.
Okay, so 10-foot off of there and then 16 feet extending this way.
Basically starting at the, uh, at the Masonry 5 chimney.
Okay.
Moving towards right about that.
So now, when you say starting at, you would mean that a certain section of the deck would go in past this, right? Past this bump out?
Yeah.
And then come out to 10 feet and then extend 16?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, with that being said, um, the 16, the 10 feet out, how much square footage would that give you between that and your mom's property? About 30 feet or?
Yeah, 30.
30.2.
30.2, okay. All right, so yeah, I interpreted it right.
Yeah, I mean, that's phase, phase one of my, uh, my plan. I was hoping to do a small retaining wall along.
Sure, to define the area, yeah.
And maybe the patio, you know?
Yeah, it's a, it's a nice area to work with. It's a nice neighborhood.
Well, yeah, I mean, a small, um, you know, when, uh, when you laid it out, you know, similar to you, I, I heard, but, um, you know, when I laid it out, I let the top in there as I could and, um, you know, fit and, yeah.
Okay, well, your pooches were doing their best to try to explain it to me. Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, based on the structure, right? Um, you've got, you have a bump out window in one area. I noticed you have a, um, chimney in one area. You have a garage off to the right, okay? I'm just looking at, you know, are there other possibilities on where you could put this, but it, it doesn't seem, based on the design of the house, there is really no other option, right?
Yeah, I'm, in, there, there isn't any egress on the other side of the garage that would make sense to put, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
I know that's a nice, there's some, a nice area there, but, um, really not conducive to the use of, uh, the deck, you know?
Right. And the house sits kind of not square centered on the lot, but offset kind of a bit on an angle.
Like, uh, the gentleman said, it's, it's, it's parallel with Central Avenue Extension mostly, with that, with the front, um, uh, frontage, you know? That's sort of what it's paralleled to. Um, there, the, you know, it's, it's, uh, one of the side, uh, boundaries is shorter than, than the other. That's why it's a little cockeyed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I really don't have any other questions. Is there anybody virtual here tonight that has any questions with regards to this application? If you could put, press the little hand button. Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions? Okay. Last call for Mr. Byrne, Mr. Reynolds. Any questions, comments, or feedback?
I'm fine.
Close and deliberate?
Go and do it.
I'm sorry?
Said okay with it.
You good?
Yep.
Great. Um, heard the petition tonight. You kind of probably have heard, we're down to four members. Would you like to move ahead tonight?
Sure, yes, please.
Want to, want to move ahead? Okay, good. I'm gonna declare the, the, the hearing closed and go into deliberation. If the board would kind of speak to, um, the criteria for a variance, that would be helpful. Mr. Reynolds?
I am looking at the shape of the lot and feel that the, the shape of the lot is in, in the home, is it perpendicular? The home's perpendicular to Central Ave. The rear, the rear line is, uh, appears to be different as noted. The west length, finding hard to read that. Oh, no, that's, that's the degrees. Is 94, just over 94 feet. The north property boundary is, um, 109 feet. That's a delta of 15 feet. The setback required is what? What's the setback? Rear setback?
35? Proposed or existing?
No, no.
Proposed is 30.2. Required is 35.
35, so given the size of the lot, that there is a 15-foot difference in the shape of the lot, that the five-foot variance going from 30 to 35 feet, um, becomes acceptable to me.
Great, thank you for speaking to the criteria. Mr. Byrne?
I will hang my star on this, on Jimmy's statement about the topography of the land and the way the house is situated. So, um, I'm for granting the, uh, the variance.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. Mr. Gallagher?
Yep, thank you, Michael. Uh, I am also in favor of it. I think it would be, uh, an improvement to the use of the backyard and an improvement to the neighborhood as well. Thank you, Michael.
Great. Okay, um, you know, I think topography issues, um, is why the house got built, um, in the fashion that it did based on the shape of the land. Um, you know, other mandatory findings are, um, we speak, we speak to shape or topography of the land or the structures. Um, you know, due to the, the design of the structure, there's really only one, you know, I'll call it proper placement of the, um, proposed deck, um, you know, in keeping with the design of the house. Obviously, as the applicant stated, you don't build your deck off of your garage where you have no access and you don't build your deck off of your bay window or, um, your chimney. So, um, I think Mr. Reynolds brought up some good point with shape. I think there's some topography issue on the land and I think, again, based on the shape of the, the structure. So, um, if I could have a motion and if there are any conditions, um, obviously, um, it's gonna be plan as submitted would be one condition and the other condition would be, um, just a note that we are accepting a plan with a reduction of the setback to 30, 30.2 inches as requested. 30 feet, two inches.
30.2, right.
Okay, 30 feet, 30.2 feet.
Yeah, which is different than.
Late night case. Um, so could I have a motion, please?
I make a motion, ZBA 2329 be, uh, be approved with pre-stated conditions.
Great. Could I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, roll call Mr. Byrne.
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Gallagher?
In favor.
And I as well. Carries. Okay, I have some, uh, comments that I'm supposed to read, right?
Oh, you can just.
Do you have a copy of it?
Yes, you can give it to him.
I'm gonna give you a copy. Thank you for coming down, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
We have some parting gifts.
This is after approval.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Have a good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, the last case is, uh, ZBA 2023-30, Matthew Tebow, uh, for the property at 177 Tony and Parkway. How are you this evening?
Good, how are you?
Very well, thank you. So it looks like you're back before us really basically because of a technicality.
Essentially, yes.
Yeah, that the board discussed and, you know, based on our abilities, based on the bylaws, um, that's how we kind of ended up here. It was a lapse.
Correct.
So, um, I guess just as a formality, just tell us where you're at? What's going on and?
So, uh, I purchased this lot in, uh, January of 2021. Prior to that, I came before the board to get the variance approved, um, on behalf of the seller of the property. So I was, I received the variance in January 2021. Purchased the land by the end of January. Next, I started clearing trees, kind of starting to clear the lot on my own. June of 2021, I met with, uh, one of the abutters, Mr. Rodeer, and we moved the easement so I don't have to go down his driveway to get into the property. We kind of, it, he made it a little easier where it could just kind of come right off the street instead of, you know, using his driveway for access. So we agreed on that. We recorded that with the registry deeds. Um, 2021, I had the lot, uh, the rest of the lot cleared. August 21, I had a, the temp access road put in so we could kind of get vehicles in and out of there. I did list the property for sale in November of 21, just because I was kind of, you know, everything going on, it was kind of in over my head, at least I thought. So, anyway, I extended the variance in February 2022. At, at that point, decided to go ahead and move forward, um, stump the lot, put the permanent, the more permanent driveway in to get the well truck down there. Drilled the well in September of 2022, which was when the first permit was pulled and that just missed the extension of the variance. It missed it, I think, by like a month roughly. After we had the well drilled, I had about a gallon a minute of pressure and the minimum for the city of Pittsburgh, I think it's four and a half, five gallons, roughly, somewhere in there. So I was required to go in front of the Board of Health for a special permit, which was granted, um, with some conditions. And. And following that, December twenty-two, I kind of redesigned the house. We were at fifteen hundred square feet, down to about seven hundred square feet, officially cut it in half just to save costs. Then went to apply for the permit in March of twenty-three and then here I am before you. So that's kind of how we got here.
Well, I appreciate the kind of the recap on everything.
No problem.
Okay, so um I'm gonna just kind of turn it over to the board. Um, Madam Chair joined us, so I think being that she only missed the first sentence and a half of your presentation, feel comfortable with voting tonight?
I do, thank you.
Thank you. Feel comfortable, you want to chair the last?
Uh, sure, then we have um our miscellaneous issues to talk about after the last matter.
So I'm gonna turn it over to the chairperson, Chairwoman, and uh I'm gonna kind of sift through some of the paperwork, but we appreciate you coming back in. Again, we do apologize, it was kind of a technicality that got us where we need to be based on the bylaws.
No worries, I appreciate you guys hearing me, so thank you.
So um I'm just looking at the uh grounds on which the variance was granted the last time.
Okay.
So, because as you, as you know from going through this once, we have to have an issue related to the shape, the soil, the topography, or an existing structure that creates a substantial hardship. I think that, um, go ahead. Oh, was that one of my, that was one of my uh co-board members? Thank you. So I I think the issue was shape and the shape of the lot as it lay along the road and the access driveway as it turned. It's certainly a lot with ample area. If there is not a single-family home that's buildable on the lot, I don't know what else you would do with it in that area. Um, and not being able to have any use of the lot seems, you know, to me as a board member, to be a hardship, so. And just so you know, I I hope this issue does not come up again as far as expiration of air, of variance goes. Normally, we'd look for a building permit, not just a well permit, a building permit to be applied for in order to exercise the variance. So I, should the board grant in, uh grant you the variance again, renew the variance, please be sure, and I know you have an application pending, please be sure to build a building permit um immediately following, okay?
Understood.
Going to my other board members, I'm gonna check Mr. Byrne, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I do not, Madam Chair, glad to see you.
Thank you, sorry I can't see you, but glad to hear you. Um, Mr. Reynolds, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I do not.
Thank you, and thank you for staying with us. Mr. Gallagher, any questions?
I do not.
Okay, and Mr. McLaughlin, any questions?
No, Madam Chair, I do not.
All right. Anything to add before we close the hearing and move to deliberation?
Um, no, just thank you for your time.
Is there any member of the public here um who wishes to make comment? I don't, uh, I assume you're online, is there anyone online? Seeing none, um, by agreement, I'm going to close the public hearing, move to deliberation. I'm just gonna ask, there were no questions, so does any board member have any comment for deliberation?
No, this, it was already approved um once, nothing has changed. There were three of the board members that are present on the board now were um at the original meeting, so um, you know, I'm certainly in favor.
Mr. Reynolds, did I see any comment from you?
My only comment would be that I am operating, you know, under the uh mindset of having reviewed the prior decision of the board and its findings, that I'm in agreement with those findings, and I'm happy to move forward tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reynolds. All right, um, looking at the last granted easement, um, the last decision of the board, um, other than the deadline, I don't believe we had any particular conditions on this variance. And unless any member has uh one to propose, I don't myself have any conditions. You will, of course, be required to record the variance at the registry of deeds, um, and we will be looking for that uh from you. It should be uh submitted to the building department before the building department will grant the building permit. So make sure, um, if the board votes in favor to that, the variance is recorded.
Okay.
All right, then I'm going to look for a motion, please.
I'll make that motion.
Is that a motion in the affirmative?
That is a motion in the affirmative to approve case number ZBA twenty-twenty-three dash thirty for variance to Matthew Tebow at one seventy-seven at Tony and Parkway.
Right, and do I have a second? Thank you. Um, I'm gonna go by roll call since we have two members remote, Mr. Byrne?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Mr. Gallagher?
In favor.
Mr. McLaughlin?
In favor.
And I am in favor that variance passes unanimously. Um, so the board will render its written decision in due course. Um, there's a twenty-day appeal period, and after that, you'll be uh issued the final decision for recording and the building permit. Good luck with your project.
Thank you, everybody, appreciate it.
Hope things proceed smoothly this time.
They will, thank you.
Mr. Reynolds, do you need to exit the building?
I do, I um, I had communicated, uh, Madam Chair, with you, uh, but not with others, that uh I have a time crunch uh at the end of this meeting, so I I do have to uh leave your good company tonight.
Mr. Reynolds, thank you so much for helping out.
All good, all good.
I appreciate it very much, have a good night.
All right, you too.
So the last matter, um, other than miscellaneous on the agenda, was a revision to rules and regulations. And there were there, there are, of course, rules and regulations of the board, um, they've not been reviewed in some time. At the last meeting, we started a discussion on this issue at the end of the meeting, I'm going to continue that a little bit. The proposal that I made, um, and and really, I'm just going to talk about these things tonight in concept and not in in words. Um, I wanted to make sure that we had a provision in our rules which permitted us to uh take a fee from the applicant to be used to hire an outside consultant when we need a more expert and independent opinion in order to make a judgment on a matter. That is something that is routinely um exercised by both Conservation Commission and by the Planning Board. I do want to make sure that we make our decisions with accurate information and accurate advice. And though I rely on the great expertise of the board, we are not experts in all areas. So that was the, what I had started out with. But I also would like to um review a couple other uh concepts that I think should be added in. The first is regarding applicants or permit holders who have repeated no-shows at hearing. And I I think the concept would be that if you have any two consecutive absences where you do not appear at a meeting at which you were scheduled, that the board can uh revoke or um give the applicant, revoke the permit or give the application leave to withdraw. And I think uh for us, when we have an applicant who has a repeated no-show, but you know, maybe they might come the next meeting, maybe they're busy, I I really think the board's time is more valuable than that, and as long as we are not denying the application, we don't have the two-year bar. Any thoughts on that one?
I like it. I'm in favor of it.
Okay. The next item, this is something that has become a frequent issue. We receive uh submissions at the meeting, including some.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair?
Oh, yes, Mr. Byrne, go ahead.
Before we, before we, before we move on to the next one, let's go back to the one we just passed.
Nothing is passed because I haven't written it down yet, so just concepts, but go ahead.
Oh, okay, all right, fine, fine. Because I would like to make it so that if a person misses two uh meetings, that he has to reapply. I mean, our time is worth the three hundred dollars that the client will have to pay to reapply.
No, I.
That's one way that we can make it uh say, you know, we act, we absolutely mean something.
Well, I I very much agree, and I I appreciate your comment and on that. I don't want to nail us.
This is only a concept, and we can talk more about it, but I think that we deserve at least that much respect.
I I agree. Um, I I think, though, I don't want to nail us down in that it has to be dismissed. I think what I'd like to do is uh say the board can dismiss um at, for that reason alone. The next um issue that I thought should be addressed in the rules, we, um, and I see that it's happened again today, uh frequently get materials, including plans, at the meeting. This does not give the board an adequate opportunity to review the plans um or materials. And so what I'd like to propose is that there be a Thursday submission deadline for any materials um prior to the Tuesday meeting. And then again, set the expectation that if you come in and hand us a plan at the meeting, we are going to continue it to the next meeting so that we have the opportunity to look at the plan. Any comment on that proposal? Um, and then the final thing uh that I thought should be addressed uh is gonna be something close to your heart, Mr. Byrne, and that is reviews. So I have thought of um this issue we have with reviews taking up our our schedule. And I've tried to weigh uh the board's concerns about making sure projects are completed, that the conditions are fulfilled, and yet not have applicants keep coming back to meetings over and over again. We have tried a uh policy of setting deadlines for completion and having reviews so that we can monitor and have the applicant be as responsible in the hopes that that will get the project done quickly. And I think at the last meeting, we had a discussion about whether that uh policy has been fruitful. And uh in general, I don't see that it has, which is unfortunate. But when a policy doesn't work, you know, we should not be afraid to change it. We should look for the policy that is going to work the best to accomplish the goals that we want. So this is my proposal for our policy on reviews, that we generally have two categories of permits or variances that come before us and where we want to review. Some are low priority, where, you know, we just want to make sure that there's no problems, that um the conditions are generally complied with, that the measures that we've taken to address any concerns of the abutters um are effective. And I would assign those to a low priority. And low priority reviews, I would propose that we take one meeting a year, maybe on our alternative date, and have the ability to call any of the permit holders that we have a specific issue with, um, either as far as non-compliance, non-completion, and have them come to that review meeting so that we are really only addressing things that have actually become a problem. And then the other category would be high priority, where we have some great concerns, where we want to make sure things happen along the way um correctly, and we're not dealing at the end of the project, oh, I put the, you know, I put the addition over here, or I didn't do this, and now it's too late to fix it. Um, or where we have something like a recent project where the building needed to be demolished because of safety issues, and we wanted to make sure that that happened. Those would be assigned to a high priority review, and we would continue to individually schedule those reviews. Regardless, um, any permit or variance where we wanted to ensure that the conditions were completed would um have a provision stating that the certificate of occupancy would not be issued until the board had confirmed uh that the conditions were completed. And it would have an expiration date on it. So that means, um, I I think that what we would do is variances one year, because that's in conformance with the statute, special permits two years, and a provision of expiration on transfer of any portion of interest, ownership interest prior to the certificate of occupancy being issued. That way, those property owners are given the freedom of that time to complete whatever the conditions are, and the impetus is on them to ask to come back to the board um for their completion review. So we're not bringing people back over and over and over again, it's a waste of our time, it's a waste of the applicant's time. So that is my proposal, I am very open to comments on that because I I am just looking for a way to make this better for everybody. Mr. Byrne, do you have any comments on that one?
I think that's great, it it's a great idea, and it's a great movement on what, you know, we, you and I had discussed. I see that you really put a lot of thought into the ideas. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne.
I think this, I think this will definitely help out the length of the meetings that we have.
I I hope that it will, but I'm gonna note that Mr. McLaughlin took us through the um list today at a record pace. We will, I think, exit here before nine. I also think it's been at least a year since we've had a midnight meeting, so I think we're all.
Madam Chair.
We're all moving in a good direction.
Likewise, as Joe mentioned, I think these are some good thoughts that will help us, you know, try to keep things moving along.
Yeah.
And and as you had mentioned during our discussion with the fact that, you know, tonight we were presented with Cobbler Drive and, you know, based on, you know, discussion, we, the board collectively did decide to to move that out. It looked like it was quite the presentation, and, you know, with all due respect to the board and the applicant, it it will give us all time to, you know, I think at least Thursday, maybe it needs to be a week, you know, but at least certainly before, we need the information before that last week.
last weekend of the meeting the following week, so if we're out doing site visits, we have it, you know?
Right.
Right. Yeah, I'm...
Thursday?
Well...
Do you have a proposed draft that you'll...
I don't today, but by the next meeting, I'm going to have some proposed words that are circulated prior to the meeting, at least one week.
The Thursday before?
The Thursday before, so I comply with my own rule.
Correct.
Thank you for the effort, that's good.
Yeah. Counselor, you've remained here till the end of the meeting, did you have any contributions or...
No.
Okay.
What idea?
You're welcome to come up close.
Or maybe sit at your normal position somewhere.
Of course.
Thank you very much. I like, I thought everything was very favorable for us to move forward, streamlining, making us more efficient going forward, and I think it's something that has needed to be done for a long time. We all felt what the items that you have brought forward, but to move it in a more defined passion is excellent, and I feel good about it, so. I think these were all little things that were frustrating us, so.
Yes. I just want to say, I know that every board member devotes a substantial amount of their volunteer time to reviewing these packets, making sure they're familiar with them, making sure they go out to the sites and look at the properties individually before we have a meeting. I value everybody's time in doing so, and I value the time that the applicants spend preparing the materials and coming before us and the...
And the overtime that our secretary puts in.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
She's the, she's the pendulum that makes the clock tick.
I told her that tonight.
The petitioner, like, you know, the more information they provide, the better answer they will get at the hearing.
That's right, that's right. You know, for instance, Mr. Hannigan's firm, I don't know if it was said during the meeting, it was unfortunate the plan didn't come in, but that written application from them was really one of the best I've seen from them, and I encourage them to continue that quality of work before our board. At any rate, I will have something together in writing, hopefully this will improve the process. If anybody has any other suggestions for the rules, definitely feel free to propose them at the next meeting. And, what was the wrap-up of that? Just thank you for everybody, to everybody for participating in that, being willing to make things better. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion, Madam.
And do we have a second, Mr. Byrne?
Second, you do.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Night.
Mr. Byrne, have a good evening.